Okay, I would like to call our regular Board of Education meeting to order. And this evening, we have a very special night. We are having our preschool program is our True Blue Moment. And we also have Girl Scout Troop that is here this evening for a little presentation to the Board. So at this time, I'd like to invite up all the preschool kids and the Girl Scouts to come up. They're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And with their teachers. Come on up. Don't be afraid.
Stand right here and face the audience. Right by the Christmas lights. Good job.
No. Red shirt. Well, I was going to say John. His hair. He's going to work anyway.
And you're going to turn around so everybody can see your beautiful faces. So turn around and look at everybody that's here. Oh, this is great. Come on up, everybody. There's lots of room. Turn around so we'll see. Everybody's waiting to see your faces. So turn around. Girl Scouts, come on up.
Where's the flag?
Flags right here, honey. We'll get to the flag one second. Good job. It's always important to know where that flag is.
It's right there.
It is right there, yes.
You found it.
Okay, do we have everybody? Is there anybody that came that I didn't get there? Okay. All right. So what I'm going to do first, guys. Okay.
Luke.
Okay. 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 Yeah, okay. All right. Okay. First off, what we're going to do, guys, is so that everybody on the audience knows who you are tonight. We're going to, I'm going to say your name, and when I say your name to introduce you, give everybody a wave out in the audience so they know who you are. We good? Okay. Okay, I'm going to start with Mrs. Ray Beers' three-year-old preschool class. We have Sophia Booth. Sophia, did we get a wave? Jason Dupuy. Ashlyn Grabsky. Alexander Hawkins. Eli Neff. Chloe Shimansky.
Chloe Anskey.
Easton Steyer.
Easton Steyer.
Good, just in case anybody can't hear me. Good. Parker Sutherland. Did we get Parker? Okay. Mike, oh, that's our name tag. That's so everybody knows who we are. Michael Teraski.
Michael Teraski.
From Miss Ray Beers' four-year-old preschool. We have Allison Michelasek. And her sister Natalie. Are we waving? We have Lilia Nesto. Stella Peets. Madeline Sabins. From Miss Bradzki's four-year-old preschool class. And Miss Bradzki is here. And Miss Trudy, where'd you go? Oh, Trudy's going to wave right there. Okay. And Jessica Gerard is here from the class as well. We have Logan Gillis. Oh, good job, Logan. Kaitlin Morden. Mitchell Otenbacher. Jet Towner. Oh, good, good waves. Mackenzie Wickstant. Okay. From Miss Legroy's four-year-old preschool class. And Miss Legroy is here. And Mrs. Miller. We have John Berkmeier. Zerilius Eisler. Noah Rappier. Bryce Rush. Evelyn Schuf. Farah Teltow. Okay, from Miss Legroy's Great Start Readiness Program. Mayala Manska. Aiden Paul. Noah Rappier. From Mrs. Otenbacher's Great Start Readiness Program. And Mrs. Otenbacher's here. She'll give a big wave. We have Emma Bolo. Luke Bestie. Turn around, honey. So wave out there, they can see you. Liam Betcher. Eric First. And Hank Schaefer. And also from Girl Scout Troop number 75076. And their leader, Mrs. Julie Jagoda. We have Abigail Bergeron. Emily Gillis. Anna Jagoda. Ashlyn Kramer. And her sister Kylie. And Skylar Marciel. Beautiful. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Now, if I can ask everybody to, oh, did I miss?
Yeah, one whole class. Did I miss the class? So Cuckoo?
Oh, I'm so sorry, Miss Cuckoo. I'm sorry. Right here, Miss Cuckoo's here with her three-year-old preschool class with Ava Hill.
And I, and I, Aubrey Parks.
You are Aubrey Parks?
Yes.
Okay, and we have Aubrey here because she did not want to be missed tonight. And Benjamin Razudic?
Yep.
Benjamin's looking good. Benjamin, can you give a little wave? Oh, let everybody see that cute face. Okay. Benjamin, yes, thank you. Okay, now, if I could get everybody to stand up. They're going to lead us in the pledge. If you guys want to turn around and face the flag, just right here.
Pledge of Allegiance.
We, we ready?
Ready.
Ready?
Ready.
Okay.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Turn me around because we're all going to clap. Great job. And they're all going to come back up. The preschoolers are going to come back up in a few minutes. They have a presentation. They're going to come up in a few minutes. And the Girl Scouts are going to come back up as well. So we got a little bit of business to do, and then we'll get back to you guys, okay? Oh, and I forgot, I'm sorry, Mrs. Napier, I'm sorry. Our head of our preschool program was up there as well. Yay. Good job. Okay, we're going to move on to our mission statement. Sarah?
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. Roll call. Chris?
Here.
Kyle?
Here.
Tracy?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Dave?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
And I'm here. We have form.
Thank you. Next is a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Is that Chris?
Yes.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Sarah and Ryan? Ryan, was that you in support?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did not hear you. That's right.
Sorry. Okay, it has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Brian?
On the personnel report, I would like to introduce our two new hires. One is a rehire, Mr. Eric Lamont, our network technician. Computer is coming back to work for Richmond, so I want to welcome him back to Richmond. And Joe Folsky, the freshman baseball coach. I don't know if...
Yep, he's right back there. Raise your hand, Joe.
Joseph, right there, is our freshman baseball coach. So I want to welcome our two new hires back to Richmond.
Excellent.
And then on the claims and accounts, I had a couple questions. Regarding check number forty-three, excuse me, forty-six-seven, let me start again here. Four-six-three-seven-eight. It's a check for $379.50. It was for Trune Law Firm. It was regarding some of the construction issues that we finalized with regarding the windows and all that was finalized. It was collective bargaining agreements regarding the, one of the action items that's on the Board. And there were some telephone calls, right, to talk to the attorney regarding some specific issues. Check number four-three, excuse me, four-six-three-nine-eight to Michigan Farm Bureau. This was a student activities account. It was our portion that the PTO had sponsored. If you remember, at the last board meeting, we had the Farm Bureau come out and do a presentation. That was our portion. Check number forty-six-four-twenty-four for O'Reilly Rancilio. There was several regarding surplus properties, some emails regarding lease, the lease agreement. Again, some of that surplus property that the district is considering, the old bus garage in particular. And then check number forty-six-four-twenty-six regarding Richmond Glass and Replacement. There was a bill, there was a check issued, and then it was canceled and reissued for a different amount. But that was to replace the doors on handles on 407. The handle locking mechanisms are all five hundred and some, some odd dollars each. And then there's a labor that's included on them. So those are the four questions that I got from Board Member Worth. I don't think I got anything from anybody else.
Okay, anyone else?
I thought there was an additional question about check replacements. What is that?
It says invoice Richmond Glass Place Door Locks Room 407 at Lee. Page fourteen is replaced. There was a check that was issued for seven-eighteen. That check was voided. We replaced that with a different check because the amount was entered wrong in the system.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, no, just, just a little note to welcome the two staff. Joe, it'll be good to have you as part of the baseball program. And Eric, it is wonderful to see you come back. We missed you for the little bit of time that you left us, and we are glad that it wasn't, wasn't as good as Richmond, and you wanted to come back. So thank you. We really, really are glad you're back. Okay, with that being said, all those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now it's time for the preschoolers. It is time for, they have a program for us. And Board members, we've been asked if we could maybe step out here so we can see it.
All right, good evening. As you can tell, we're flexible in preschool in all sorts of ways. So thank you for your patience. We know it's not easy to get out at this time of the evening, but this is our future, so thank you for being here. We're all excited to see the performance. Before we get started, just a quick presentation on some of the really important factors of the early on years. I'm Miss Napier, the director, as Mrs. Teltow announced. And Trudy Rappier, three and four-year-old preschool teacher's going to be doing a quick presentation before the kids get up here, which is why we're all really here tonight. So please welcome Trudy Rappier.
Thank you. We wanted to thank the Board and everyone for coming out this evening. I know the weather's not cooperating quite nicely with us tonight, but we appreciate you taking the time to come out and support us in this event. I just wanted to go over a couple things to touch base about the Richmond Early Childhood Learning Center and early education of young children. We've done a cute little slide presentation for you. One of the main things we wanted to highlight on is the fact that statistics show that 85% of all brain development occurs before the age of five. But of that, only 14% of public education dollars are spent on early education in the United States, early childhood education. And as you notice, this is something that is changing. There are more and more emphasis being put on the development of early childhood programs, and Richmond is definitely leaning toward doing that. Another thing we wanted to touch base on was that this highlights kind of the importance of early childhood and stuff. One of the biggest things in early childhood development, not just educationally based, academically, but also social skills, gross motor skills, cognitive development. And one of the main things is to build impulse control and problem-solving skills. That's a huge skill that if we can master that skill at a preschool level, then we are ready to learn more academics as we grow and go forward. Some of the highlights for our program is the curriculum. We do use creative curriculum at our early childhood program. This is a research-based program, and it's based on children's interests. All of the programs and all the classrooms that we use, we go on children's interests, and we don't just go by lesson however we so choose. We observe what the children's interests are, and we develop our lesson plans based on those interests. Creative curriculum is also something that most of Macomb County preschools use. The GSRP programs and Head Start programs all utilize these programs, and we work together with the ISD and many other facilities to implement these programs. Some of our highlights are, one of the lessons, some of the GSRP classes and other preschool classes did, we did a study on trees. These, some pictures just highlighting different studies we've done. Some things studying buildings. We're building with blocks, discussing how buildings are and what they look like. Here we are studying trees again. We went out, took nature walks. Many of the classes went around collecting leaves, looking at trees, picking up things from the trees. As many of you know, that we are very welcoming to new families. We like to have family involvement in many of our programs, ways we do this. We have different celebrations in our classrooms for holiday parties. We also do field trips. We go to the Apple Orchard, Wilcox Farms. Last year, we went to the zoo. This is a picture of our Thanksgiving feast where the classes got together and enjoyed a feast. We all brought in things and had our parents come in and join us. Then we have a highlight of our staff. All but one of our staff members this year is returning from last year, which is a wonderful asset to our program. That allows us to develop a good relationship with one another, really get to know each other, and build our teamwork abilities, and become a family together. We also want to thank the Board. This year, we've been able to implement a PD days twice a month for two and a half hours a month. We are able to meet and collaborate together, make sure we're all on the same page, and actually brainstorm ideas together and work to make sure our programs are going in the same direction. As many of you know, that we definitely put our students and families first in this program. This is something we feel is very important. As you can see, many of the children have relationships with their teachers and their peers, and that's very important for us for developing the early childhood program. One thing I did want to touch base on is we checked, and we don't have concrete numbers, but it's estimated that the early childhood program in Richmond has grown 60% in the last five years. The main thing we want to touch base on is, it is our vision that each child who comes through our doors joins a community of children, families, and teachers engaged in the joy, work, and wonder of childhood. And I think Richmond Schools does an amazing job at that. And we wanted to thank Mr. Wamsley, the Board, Mrs. Napier, and Mr. Koshen for all their support, and of course, all the family. Thank you for allowing us the time with your children. Thank you.
So good. You're fine. Yeah, it smells good. It's my gum, probably. Hi, Estee.
Hi, Leo.
Come on, don't. It's okay. Traveling to see you.
We're going to look that way.
Like Leo, and like this side. Good job. Come on back here, friends. Hi, Leo. Come on, friends. Here we go. Watch out. We're going to try. Look at all of us.
I'm up. You're in my way.
I am the chocolate. Hi.
Jingle bells. One, two. Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride one horse open sleigh. Hey! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way.
I'm losing my voice. Jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride one horse open sleigh. Hey! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride one horse open sleigh. Hey! I'm losing my... I'm losing my...
Jingle, 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 jingle.
Five little gingerbread jumping on a bed. One horse away, he was sad. Four little gingerbread eating shallow. One horse away, he was sad. Three little gingerbread eating meat. One runs away, he was sad. Two little gingerbread falling down. One runs away, he was sad. One little gingerbread eating meat. He ran away, and he was sad. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Great job, preschoolers.
Good job.
Okay. Mrs. Jagoda, would you like to bring your Girl Scout Trooper? Yep, you can. Yep. Yep, whenever you're ready, Mrs. Jagoda.
Aye. So last year, our Girl Scout Troop worked on badges that taught them leadership skills. As part of those badges, they worked on finding out what their values are and what they care about, and they worked on connecting and leading within their own family and troop. And they also worked on connecting and leading within their community. To complete their badge, they had to find a problem in their local community that they cared about and think of ways to solve it. They narrowed down some different problems, and they came up with one. And then they learned, one of the ways to solve problems is to voice your concerns and get knowledge out there that this is a problem. So the girls wrote a letter to the school board, and they are here to read that to you guys tonight.
Dear Richmond School Board. Our troop is concerned about all the viruses that have went around school last year. One way to stop this would be to wipe down the desks, chairs, door knobs, and lights, which is at the end of every day. Another way would be for us to have hand sanitizer available in all classrooms.
Our troop would like to volunteer a couple of times next year to clean some classrooms to help with this problem. We also are going to collect hand sanitizer in my suite to donate. We hope the school board will consider having rooms cleaned more frequently, more frequently as well. Sincerely, Girls, Girl Scout Troop, 75076.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Jagoda, do you have an actual copy? And they all signed it. Excellent. Okay. Thank you, ladies. Good job. Okay, next. Richmond Education Foundation Mini Grants. The Richmond Education Foundation is a group of individuals that works towards getting scholarships for students and mini grants for teachers. And every year, the Board allows them to present their grant recipient certificates here at our board meeting. So we're doing that this evening, and we have with us Mr. Rich Michaels, who is the president of the Education Foundation here this evening to present the certificates. Mr. Michaels? Mr. Michaels.
Thank you. Hello. Richmond Education Foundation is here to raise, we work to raise money to give out student scholarships and also student and tutor grants every year. And tonight, we're going to be handing out three grants from applications we received, I believe last month, correct? The first grant will go to Tamara Wilson with the Lee Elementary School. She had asked for child development, learning games to help with hand-eye coordination and also numbers and alphabet. Thank you. The second grant will go to Rhonda LeBroy, also from the Lee Elementary School. She also asked for child development games for hand-eye coordination. And Jacqueline Davidson, the art teacher from the middle school, asked for a printing press to, I guess the kids, something we don't have where they can run calligraphy through? Is that correct?
Nope. Like stamps.
Stamps?
Yeah.
Printmaking press. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to the foundation. Julie Kolosinski is out in the audience, she's also a member of the board, as Tracy and I are as well. So thank you to them and their work. And, oh, and Julie Jagoda is also on the board with us. So, and we thank the three teachers and we look forward to you being able to have some good stuff happening with those grants.
Send us pictures of the good stuff after you get it.
Yes.
You know, with kids using it and stuff. Get that to us so we can see it in action.
Absolutely. Brian, are you doing this?
Yes, because I think Chris was tied up with the...
Okay, okay, next is the freshman sports update.
In your packet, you'll see two freshman sports reports if, just for the listening audience and the board recollection, freshman sports is to be self-sufficient. At one point in time, the board had made a decision that it needed to be self-sufficient. So the first document that you have talks about where we finished last school year. Forgive me, I'm trying to figure out how to do arts this and for some reason, I cannot. So, in your document, you'll see what freshman football cost us when you look at compared to the amount of money brought in in terms of pay to participate, when you include officials and so forth. And actually, the revenue is short of about $3,200. You'll see volleyball, the revenue almost matches the expenses. Boys' basketball runs a little, it's about $295 short over the revenue. And girls' basketball is listed there. Baseball is also listed there, about $828, a lot more in expenses than the revenue we bring in. I place softball on here, even though we don't run a softball, if we had the numbers because of Title IX, we would run a softball, but it's all zero. So we finished last year using $6,326 out of the freshman sports account. If you recall, about two years ago, not this past fall, but two years ago, we ran a fundraiser to raise money for freshman sports, Couch at Bingo. So we still had money in that account to pay and utilize for freshman sport. That brings us down to a balance of about $1,243.98. So when you look at the second document, which is in your packet, that gets us through the... The starting balance is at $1,243.98. When you look at football, the cost is about $4,980 to run the, in expenses over revenue. Volleyball, the cost is about $1,632, more expenses than revenue. So for the fall, we are short $5,300. We project boys' basketball, we do have some of the salaries built in, but there are the officials and so forth. Those are projections which will come to you at a later date. When you look at the girls' basketball on the other side, as I reported in this week's newsletter, the girls' basketball, because of the numbers in freshman JV and volley varsity, we do not have enough to run a girls' basketball. So those girls are already, if they're choosing to play, relocated or reassigned to the JV or varsity team. That coach spent part of their time already working with them, trying to build the program. So that's why you see that appropriated amount there. We have the projected baseball and we do not anticipate the numbers for softball, so that's why you see the projection. So when all the dust settles, we would be $6,314.57 short, once you take away the $1,200 at the beginning of the balance. So that's what we will be invoicing the boosters for, who recently, this past August, ran the freshman sports fundraiser, the Couch at Bingo. So they will get an invoice issued for the fall amount for $5,300. And then once we have the winter amount and ultimately the spring, they'll get the second invoice to pay for those. So this freshman sports will not cost the district any funds.
Thank you. Any questions from anyone? No? Thank you, Brian. Next. Motion to go into closed session for attorney-client communication. Is that Kyle? Second? Is that Tracy? Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we will be going into closed session and we will be back. We are back in open session at 7:50. And next on the agenda is the presentation by the City of Richmond for a public utility easement request.
Thank you for having us back. We were here, I think, back in the spring when we talked conceptually about a easement going from the lift station at the corner of the middle school back to the south property line of the school. At the time, we weren't real sure where the McComb County Public Works would want us to cross the drain. So we also, in the early sketches that we showed the school board, also showed it turning to the east and running along a portion of your south property line. We've since, that meeting and where we kind of received conceptual approval for moving forward, we have had meetings with our McComb County Public Works. They're allowing us to cross the drain directly due south of the lift station essentially. So we no longer need an easement or return and go along the southern boundary line. So our engineering firm, Tetra Tech, created a document and associated maps that provide the easement to the city. We provided those to the school and your attorney changed the language part of the easement. We're fine with what he created, so what you see before you under both option A and option B is a Word document created by the schools. With that, and I apologize for, I didn't pretend to, but probably muddied the waters a little bit, I gave you two options. Either one, the city's fine with, we're comfortable, either option A or option B. Option A, which I believe you have before you, is essentially what we presented back in the spring. It's an easement that goes 25 feet along your western boundary line, down to your southern boundary line. That's where the sewer line would be installed. In meeting with the contractor, he was mentioning that you would probably need a 10-foot temporary easement, because as you're putting the sewer line in, your excavator's probably going to be over the 25 feet. So that extra 10 feet just gives the contractor some room to maneuver while he's installing the sewer line. So pretty much, this option A is as close to what we could provide the school with what we presented in the spring. And we're fine with that. I did give an option B, as many of you know, we do have some water and sewer lines that run from Division Road to the middle school. And so, kind of common practice for the city, is where we see things that don't match up with what's existing. We provided you with kind of an option B that has the easement from the pumps, or the lift station, down to the southern boundary line, and then an easement, a 25-foot easement along your western boundary line, going out to Division Road, to kind of show where water and sewer already exist. That just kind of provides an easement for what's in the ground and, you know, is an option for the school board if you want to come clean that up. But again, we're comfortable either way the school board wants to go. And both Jim and I are here if you have any questions.
Just one quick question. You said engineering company? What engineering company did you use?
Tetra Tech.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I think...
He answered my questions.
One of the things that the attorney wanted us to add in was that if we disturbed that road under option B, we would replace the whole width of the road. And so that was kind of, it's left in there for both option A and B, although really, it's only relevant if the school board goes with option B.
And option B came about because...
That was just us...
You went out checking and...
Looking at it, realizing that we already have water and sewer lines that go from the middle school out to Division Road that provides an easement for those to...
It's not uncommon that utilities installed some time ago are not in a recorded easement. And so it's standard practice for the city that when we find that, that we do try to clean that up and get something on file. So we run into that quite often and this is just another instance of that.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, this public comment. Portion of our meeting, if there is anyone in the audience who would like to address the board, they may do so. You can come up to the podium, there's a card, but you can put your name and phone number down if you have a question that needs to be answered. It's not a question and answer period, but if you do have a question, someone will get back to you. You have three minutes to speak. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? No, okay. Then we will move on to our Board of Education Student Rep Report, Haley.
Okay. Our elementary school students are having the opportunity this whole week. It started today, it runs through Friday. They have a Santa shop during their library time, so that gives them the opportunity to, you know, become more educated on how money works and get to buy their own gifts for their family and friends. So that's pretty neat, they're getting that opportunity. On December 19th, there'll be the True Blue PBIS Assembly for all students. And then on December 21st, that last day, that half-day, there will be a school-wide sing-along at 10:30 a.m. The middle school, they are participating in their spelling bee on December 18th, and then the geography bee, you will follow that on December 20th. They're also hosting their third annual dodgeball tournament, and I believe they're joined by the student government and the PTA. So I know that that's always, they have a big turnout for that, and we're kind of jealous here at the high school, we're trying to get the same participation. Thursday, the 21st, again on that half-day, they are going to have a PBIS student government ran reward pep assembly. Also, middle school basketball has started, they're off to a good start, and they play again this Thursday at Emily City. Onto the high school. Like I've said in previous meetings, we're really just gearing up for Christmas. It's a lot of work, because we do, we do a lot of events here, like we're doing an ornament exchange and our spirit week, our ugly sweater contest, and that's all next week. So that's kind of what our student government is working on right now. This Saturday, both our varsity teams won at the Dave Jackson Memorial Tournament. They beat Cardinal Mooney. Our choir concert is, well, that's middle school as well, so that's middle school and high school, that's this Wednesday and Thursday at 7:00 p.m. in the auditorium. I believe tickets are $5 at the door. I also wanted to say that I had the opportunity to attend the middle school and high school band concert last week and that they did a phenomenal job. The band always does, me and my mom always make it a thing to go every time, so good job to them. And then, personal finance, our personal finance classes here at the high school are doing something pretty neat that I wanted to share with you. This chapter is all about like college and things, so that's really relevant, because if you take personal finance, I think it's all seniors this year. So we get to, you pick your college and you figure out your tuition, and then you figure out how much debt you're going to be in if you didn't have, you know, any scholarships or things like that. And then you have to, you know, figure out what your income will be with that, and it's just, it's really relevant right now. So I thought that that was really nice. And Mr. Wagner has a calculator for us that will tell us exactly like how much we would have to pay, depending on how many years we wanted our loan to be out for. So it gives us like 30 years or 15, so that's pretty neat. Also, we're in, with that, we're doing letters to our 30-year-old selves, and we're supposed to say like where we went to school, where we graduated from, what we're doing for a living, if we're married or not, if we have children. So that's kind of a neat prediction that is probably going to make us laugh at ourselves one day. But that's just really neat. I know that DAKA is working really hard because they're going to, they compete in January, so I'll have more information when we come back. Also, our National Honor Society members had the chance to participate in the school improvement thing that we did last meeting today. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend, which really bummed me out, but I did get to talk to some students about it, and I know that they thought that it was, it was a really good opportunity for them to have a voice. I know that a lot of people had some really positive things to say about it, that they identified, you know, problems or even changes that they'd like to see and solutions, how to get there. So I thought that that was really neat and they appreciated that opportunity. So that concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you, Haley. Matt Superintendent, Legislative Update.
Just a couple things, I want to piggyback on what Haley said. Today was the first day we had the high school staff after school today. We did the students, there was probably 50, 60 students that participated at the high school level regarding that forum. And tonight is the forum for parents, and one of the three forums for parents and community members. It's very interesting, there's a lot of positive that people are saying about Richmond. There's a lot of great ideas, and I can echo what Haley said, there's some really interesting perspectives from students that definitely will be considered in the process. So I want to thank those students for taking the time, as well as the staff, took the time to have some honest conversations about moving the district forward. I don't have a whole lot, I mean, we have the band, or excuse me, the choir concerts are this week, Wednesday and Thursday. I want to give a shout-out to the Key Club, who was at the Breakfast with Santa this past weekend. The Lions Club did nothing but rave about how wonderful our students were and thanked for their generosity in helping that event become very successful. And that's really it. I do have a request, if there are any board members that are available. I did get a notice from Santa that he will be here on the 21st, so if anybody'd like to help Santa on the 21st, check to make, do a last-minute check, just make sure students and staff are on the good list. I imagine around 7:30-ish that he'll arrive, so if anybody's available, he's looking for some else.
I'm thinking of one, that'll be a great elf again this year.
Repeat performance would be a good thing.
Go, tag team. Thank you, next, items of interest for members of the board. Does anyone have anything?
Thank you, Brian. I know you were out standing in the middle of the street, I think, selling these good fellow papers. Thank you for that good work. I know that is money that goes right back into all kinds of places where it's needed in the area, so thank you for that. Thank you too, a great article about the Backpack Blessing Program that was in the paper, thank you for your... here in what they do. So thank you for your work with that.
Had a chance to go to the tree lighting, the city tree lighting, and listen to our choir. They did a fantastic job and made that night all that more festive for all of us waiting for the lights to go on. So Haley, you and your group, the entire choir, sorry, thanks for taking time out of your Friday night and making it great for the city.
Okay, that's it? All right, next, looking for a motion to go into closed session for attorney-client communication.
So...
Sarah, was that you?
No, it's Chris.
I mean, Chris. Okay, it has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries, and we will be back. We are back in open session at 9:02. Where are we? Okay.
About 9:10. We're going to do 9:10?
What did I say, 9:02? 9:10 sounds good, since that's really what time it is. Okay, moving on to our action items. First one, Regional Youth Initiative.
I'd like to make a motion. Yep. I'd like to make a motion to direct administration to terminate the building use agreement with RYI effective January 31st pursuant to paragraph eight of the agreement.
Support.
Is that Kyle? And it's January 31st, 2018.
Correct.
Okay, it has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next, approval of elective credit for robotics.
The first, Mr. First.
Anthony?
No, you can speak from there.
You can speak from there.
As part of the robotics grant that the district applied for in the FAQs and in your backup, it is required that the district offer an elective credit for students to compete in at least two district events and log at least 60 hours in the first robotics program. As an addition to that, the district would like to also have those students write a five-paragraph paper that is a reflection on what robotics has either done for them or they've learned for robotics, and that would then give them half a credit for elective towards their evaluation.
So if they participate in robotics all four years, they could theoretically earn up to two credits, elective credits, half each year.
Okay, there's the sample resolution.
A motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve robotics as an elective credits as indicated in the attached documentation.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, questions?
That's a great idea.
There was something in the paperwork about we pick up 50% of the cost of some meetings down the road for...
Part of the grant we have to, is a match grant, so for every dollar we get, we have to be obligated to match it 50%, which we currently do. On the stipend, we match it based when you pay the FICA retirement. They give us the stipends out, we pay the FICA retirement, so that's a practice that we've done for years, and that's part of the grant, that's been part of the grant.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, it has been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next, approval of annual summer tax resolution. T M E?
T M E, do you have an overview of what this is?
Districts historically have collected their property taxes in the winter collection, but the sale allows us in order to improve our cash flow to elect a summer collection, and this resolution allows us to do that, where we can collect our property taxes in the summer and improves our cash flow towards the outside.
This is something we've been doing for years. It's an annual thing that we bring to the December meeting, so that will notify the townships and say that this is what we'd like to do for the collection.
Okay, thank you.
A motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the summer tax resolution is presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next, approval of separation agreement and release.
In your backup, you'll see the approval of a separation agreement with one of our teachers, Mary Jane Kuna. The agreement calls for her to be on unpaid leave of absence through February 28, 2018, effective March 1st, 2018. She will officially have been resigned from the district. In your backup that I provided you, you'll see a chart for the current dollar amount, which is anticipated to be about $6,300, $6,400, which is the insurance cost to pay for December, January, and February. You'll also see in that backup that once this document is approved by the board, Mrs. Kuna signed and agreed to it on December 6th. She has until December 13th to, if you call it buyer's remorse, if you will, withdraw from the agreement, a seven-day window. Should she withdraw from the window, then I would be coming back to the board to determine what action we want to take based on previous discussion.
Excuse me, a sample resolution?
My motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the separation agreement and release is presented in the attached documents.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
I'm not sure was her name in that, in that motion? Does it need to be in that motion?
No, but it says is presented in the attached. Do you want her name?
I just was wondering if it had to be.
No, because it's all in the attached documents, all public record and so forth. And I publicly said that, you know, so I don't...
Anybody else? But she did sign.
She did sign. You have a copy of the agreement that she signed on December 6th, and so we'll sign the agreement, and then that's with the Wednesday.
Anyone else? Okay, it has been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next, approval of City of Richmond Public Utility Easement Request.
I'll just briefly say that you received a presentation tonight. My recommendation, based on the conversation we had back in June, as well as the presentation tonight, is to approve one of the options that the city presented tonight, so just be a discussion on the board which option.
And so there's a sample resolution. Person that makes the motion picks the option.
Just to recap, option A is based on what was presented last June, which would be from the middle school western boundary. Option B starts at Division Street and goes the whole, entire western boundary of the district. So when you're going to read the motion, A is middle school back, B is the entire western border.
My motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the City of Richmond Public Utility Easement Request, option...
Let me make sure I get it right.
B, option B, as presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
Support.
Is that Kyle? It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, next, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed sessions.
Support.
Kyle, Sarah, okay, moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We're going into closed session, and we'll be back. Back in open session at 9:23. Now we are on to number 18, Approval of Secretarial Contract. There's a sample resolution.
My motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve an extension of the master agreement between Richmond Community Schools, Board of Education, and Secretarial Unit Teamsters State, County, and Municipal Workers, Local 214 through June 20 through June 30, 2019, as well as the compensation outlined in the attached documentation.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Other than thank you, Brian, and thank you to the secretarial group, this was quick, and we're very happy with this.
I just wanted to say that this is, this went through mediation if required, and sometimes mediation is looked at as frowned upon. We've been able to settle a lot of contracts through mediation, so it's a third party objectively looking at both sides, so I do appreciate the secretaries and the committee.
It has been moved and supported. I will do a roll call vote. Dave?
Yes.
Sarah?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
An aye vote, aye. Motion carries. Okay, next, motion to go into closed session for attorney-client communication.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried. We'll be back. It is 9:50, we're back in open session. Based on discussion in closed session, first off, I'd look, I need a motion to amend the agenda to add another closed session.
Make a motion to amend the agenda to make an additional closed session based on the Open Meeting Act, Section 8A.
Anybody want to support it?
I support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Only that under Section 8A of the Open Meetings Act, in order to go to closed session, we would need a request for closed session from the person affected.
Yep, and we have it.
I did, I did update my request to reflect this.
I got it right here. I got it. I just said we had it. Okay.
That was updated to...
Says December 11.
For the date. All right, thank you.
It says, "This memorandum serves as my written request for the Richmond Community Schools Board of Education to conduct my evaluation and all things associated with the evaluation as allowed by law in closed session on December 11, 2017."
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so the motion was to amend the agenda so we could have the additional closed, okay.
Correct.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried. We're going into closed session, and we shall return.
Oh, that's a good point. Margaret?
Margaret, that was the motion to change the agenda, not actually to go into closed session, I believe.
Yep, Tracy, you're right, Sarah, thank you.
My motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Who's second, Tracy?
Yep.
All those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed? Here we go. We are back in open session. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the superintendent's evaluation. We conducted Mr. Walmsley's evaluation on November 27th, and we went back in this evening for some additional evaluation conversation, and we, based on the evaluation, we have come up with a grade, I guess, or rating. What is, what's the correct word? Rating?
Rating.
Rating of highly effective for Mr. Walmsley. So at this time, I am looking for a motion to approve the superintendent's evaluation as presented in our packet, which includes a highly effective rating.
My motion to approve the superintendent's evaluation is presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Just briefly, and just to cover myself because I was not present. As the board knows, I was unable to attend the superintendent evaluation due to a family medical issue. I wasn't present for the discussions and deliberations regarding the evaluation. I have no idea what was said in that room, and yet I have a duty to make an informed vote. I've spoken with multiple members about how the evaluation went, including Ms. Talto and Sarah. I reviewed the minutes from the closed session, and I've learned enough that I feel I can make an informed vote. So I have no doubt that my fellow board members conformed to the required procedure and evaluated Mr. Walmsley, that the process was fair and that they did reach a consensus in regard to overall rating. While the final result may not in all components reflect the scores for which I would have advocated had I been present, I do recognize that consensus building requires compromise and that the result may very well have been the same had I been there. So you all went through the process, I didn't, and I don't feel as appropriate for you to disturb your consensus, so I don't disapprove, I guess. So I say all that only because of my duty to make an informed vote and the fact that I was not there. Thank you.
Anybody else? I would just like to make a statement that, once again, Brian, you are everything that you advertised yourself to be from day one. You do an amazing job for our district. Your work with the board is above anything. You make us look good every single day, and we are very pleased to be able to, to work with you and have you advocate for our students and our school district.
I agree. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
I wanted to thank you as well. I was at the meeting, and I want to reassure you that there was a lot of discussion that did take place at the meeting, and I know that the evaluation was highly considered and a lot of time was taken to consider each and every area of the evaluation, and I appreciate that we have a superintendent that is willing to stand up for the party when we need him to, that he's out in the community doing things that aren't necessarily in his job description, and that he's there and representing our students, our staff, and us well out there, so I appreciate that.
And that includes a great Santa suit at the Ugly Sweater Party for Sandy's kids that he comes in all for it.
Thank you very much for your dedication to the children of Richmond, Brian, and thank your family, too, your dedication. I know pulls you away from your family regularly, and so thank all of them as well for sharing you with us.
Okay, that being said, it has been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay.
I'm sorry, was that nay?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is approval of amendment to the superintendent's contract. When we conduct the superintendent's evaluation, part of the process is that in his contract, if he gets a satisfactory evaluation, the contract automatically extends a year. He has a five-year contract, it automatically extends a year. So that is in fact happening. Part of the process also, it, when conducting the evaluation, is to have a discussion about a pay increase with respect to a satisfactory, if you will, evaluation. And the Board of Education created a scale for this purpose, and there are four, four categories, ineffective, minimally effective, effective, and highly effective. In the areas of ineffective and minimally effective, the scale is a zero pay increase, and I would assume for those sitting in the audience, that would be obvious why that would be. To get an effective evaluation, we set the scale this year for a zero to a 2.5% pay increase. For a highly effective evaluation, we set a scale of 0 to 5%. And discussion, this is, this is part of the program, if you will, where we talk about that with the superintendent, and based on the highly effective evaluation that Mr. Walmsley received, the board is interested in putting out an offer of a 3% salary increase. This needs to be done in open session, so, Mr. Walmsley, that is what we, based on your highly effective evaluation, that is where, where we are going, and we know that you have something that you want to present to us this evening. And we know that you have something that you want to present to us this evening regarding your thoughts on that area of the evaluation.
The document that I am passing out, if you look at it with the current original contract of seven-one, two thousand and fourteen, although it should have been paged on it, but it opens up like a book. I provided the board, since there are only two members that have been here since I was originally hired, a summary of the contract and my evaluation, so you can see. The first year of the evaluation was completed in June twenty-second of two thousand and fifteen. There was no action taken by the board at that time. My contract did extend, as you had indicated, President Helfer, to the year two thousand and twenty. At that time, I didn't request any increase to my base salary, and I didn't request any benefits. If you move ahead on the next page to the seven-one fifteen to six-thirty sixteen, my evaluation, excuse me, I do want to go back to that first one. I was received an effective evaluation, and I made some notes on it because I think it's important for everybody to understand. At that time, we had an administrator in this district that did not follow district protocol and compromise. So all staff did not receive anything higher than effective. And I had asked the board at that time not to give me anything higher than effective because I felt that would be not fair as an organization to prevent other people from being highly effective. The second thing I did, asked the board to consider, was, at that time, we had started using student growth model, and our target was eighty percent of the students meeting, they were exceeding their student growth. At that time, as a district, we did not meet that target. I lowered the standard for all administrators and teachers so that they would meet the target. I asked the board not to lower the standard for me during our evaluation process to hold me to that eighty percent, which resulted in me getting a minimally effective in the student achievement data. We moved forward. The next year, I received an effective rating, seven highly effective slash exceeds expectations, and two effective meets. Again, my contract extended one year. At that contract, I voluntarily asked the board to accept the contract that reduced, or asked me to pay more for my vision and dental insurance. Currently, at the time, I was paying zero. I now pay forty percent of that vision and dental. Part of that was, I was asking my administrative staff, my secretaries, the parapro, all to do the same. It was asked of the REA. All groups have agreed to that, except the REA. So I, I did not ask for an increase then, nor was I asking for any additional benefits. Later on, if you go to the bottom of the next page, you'll see that we opened my contract to change the evaluation timeline. At that time, I didn't ask for an amount, any adjustments. I didn't ask for an increase. In last year's evaluation, I was rated highly effective. I did not ask, again, for an increase, and I did not ask for a, any benefits. This year, based on the evaluation, what was just approved by the board, I was approved for a highly effective evaluation. My contract extends. I am not asking for a raise for my base salary from the range, but I would like the board to consider three additions to my contract. That's what I'd like to go over with you. The first item that I've asked the board to consider is, under the employment section of my contract, I would like, I'm requesting the board consider adding the following language. "To support the superintendent with the daily and operational needs of the district, the district agrees to minimally employ the following exempt positions: administrative assistant to the superintendent, director of business and management services, payroll and employee benefits coordinator, purchasing and accounts payable coordinator, community service, excuse me, excuse me, the community liaison and public relations secretary, director of curriculum and educational services, director of student support services, food service director, and transportation director. Superintendent shall have the discretion to appropriately adjust the title or duties of these set positions, and the FTE status of each of these set positions shall be mutually agreed upon based on the operational needs of the school district throughout the budget process." My reasoning rationale behind this is, these individuals, running a school district is not a one-person show. And if we're going to make significant strides in this district and moving forward, I'm asking the board to consider keeping these positions and getting them off necessarily discussion unless we're at a situation from a financial end that we can agree to having these conversations. If you, if the board at any point considered eliminating the transportation director, I know nothing about transportation. And we eliminated the operations director, and we assume that. If these other positions were eliminated, I strongly believe that the compromise of the services that this community expects of the district would deteriorate because, as you add more to people's plate, things fall through the crack. That first one has no financial considerations to the district. It's already built into the budget, so there's no new cost to the district.
Can I just, before you go further?
Yep.
Do we want to hear all three, or do we want to talk each one as he goes?
Let's just hear them.
Hear them, and then go from there? Okay.
The second one is, when I got hired into this district, let me read it first, and then I'll give my rationale. "Upon retirement from Richmond Community Schools, the school district shall reimburse the superintendent the cost of self-espoused retirement health, vision, and dental insurance, less the state of Michigan's portion, for a period of time equal to the number of service years acquired in Richmond Community Schools at the time of retirement, rounded to the next whole number. The superintendent shall submit the appropriate documentation for reimbursement on a yearly basis." I have no intention of going anywhere else. I said that publicly. I, when I came here, that was my intention, was to retire from Richmond Community Schools. I pride myself on working and building relationships and overcoming those obstacles. What I'm looking for is that if we're, as a committed group, I mean, we're, we're here five years at least on the current contract, I've got many more years till I retire. So what I'm looking for is, if there, if I do end my career in Richmond and not seek another employment, this would be the only time that the district would have to pay. If an opportunity presented itself, my family had to relocate due to my wife's company, this wouldn't cost the district anything if I left, other than retiring from the district. What it positions you is my intent to finish my tenure here in Richmond, my commitment to Richmond Community Schools and the students and staff. You'll see a box there. Currently, the Office of Retirement Services publishes these rates every year. So currently, that would be the rate that, if I were to retire, would have been the cost for the district. Some people may consider this a legacy cost. It's no different than what we currently offer three of our administrators, as well as those that have taken the buyout previously, that you leave the district, and we're going to pay you something to leave. Currently, the three administrators and one currently receiving, so four administrators, receive up to forty-five percent of their base salary, spread out over five years. That option is not available to all administrators, and currently it's not offered to me. What I'm looking at, and when you look at that rate of pay that I gave you, forgive me, I don't know what they, I can't remember what the number you gave.
Three.
With a three percent?
Three.
On the sheet I gave you, three percent built into a budget every year, would a addition, would be with FICA retirement built into another roughly five thousand dollars that we'd have to build into the cost. This is a gamble on both of our sides, that I'm going to retire from Richmond, and it's a gamble that if I do retire, that the board would have a cost for every year that I, that I'm in the district. And the last thing I'm asking for consideration would be, at the end of the contract, to add the following paragraph, and this has no cost. "In addition to directing all, in addition to directing that all complaints, criticisms, and suggestions concerning the district or any of its personnel to the superintendent is set forth." That's the previous paragraph. "The board agrees that it shall work with the superintendent in the spirit of cooperation and teamwork, and shall provide the superintendent with periodic opportunities to discuss superintendent-board relationship, excuse me, board-superintendent relationship. Whenever it is deemed desirable by either the majority of the board or by the superintendent, an outside advisor will be, will be mutually selected by the board and superintendent, and shall be paid for by the school district to facilitate discussion of the relationship of the board and the superintendent in the advancement of the best interest of this district." My rationale behind this is, over the next five years, there's a potential that this board could switch dramatically through elections. A six-year commitment is very, is a long time to commit as a board member. And so my intent here is, I want to maintain a very good relationship with the board. I want to maintain that, providing you with the guidance that I feel I've been providing you. And at any point during that time that I, that I or the board feel we need to work on that relationship, that it's in the contract that we do. So the proposal in front of you, I'm requesting no pay increase. Keep my base salary that you, you provided me since July first, two thousand and fourteen. No changes to my insurance, but to consider these three options as part of my amendments to my contract.
Brian, are you asking for, I was to consider all three of these as a group? These, all three considerations, or each one individually?
I would like to forego any raises with these three. That's what I would like.
So for number one, the idea being keeping all of those, but when you're talking about the opt-to-e status, that could be through the budget process, that all of these may be what we have, but they may not be at a full-time. That would be, right? That's what that means?
Correct.
That's what that's saying?
It may be putting two part-times together. Obviously, certification requirement would be needed, but maintaining that we need to, these are key positions that, I believe strongly that, if we're going to move this organization forward, we need to have insurance.
But this says full-time status of each set position.
So FTE, so for instance, if the transportation director is currently full-time, we share it with New Haven and Richmond. If that agreement ever went away, you know, that's part of the budget process, I would be coming to you saying, I don't believe, I might, depending, maybe our enrollment's growing, and we need the need, but maybe let's go down there, a full-time transportation, but we need a transportation. I got to have someone overseeing transportation. So through the budget process, we look at enrollment, we look at, if the board, I think the only exception to that would be if the board chooses to eliminate transportation ability, and we're getting out of the business. Then you wouldn't, that would be through the budget process, not that we're doing, so please do not quote that in the newspaper. But that would be through that budget process, that we both would agree, yeah.
Does that include any kind of combination? Like, keeping all of these, but maybe, maybe two positions would be one person? Like, if they were, like, I'm just going to throw out halftime food service, halftime transportation. We did that many years ago, but is it, does it include that kind of conversation as well?
To me, that's what we need to look at, is what's in the needs of the organization.
Does that fall under the language of mutually agreed upon based on the operational needs of the school district through the budget process?
So what I, I would look at that as saying, when I, we go through the budget process, I'm going to bring you, here's my recommendation.
Right.
As we go through and talk about it, the other creative ways that we can do this is going to come up.
Right.
I don't necessarily mean it, it's an end-all and be-all. That's not what my intent is, but there's a commitment that we need these key positions. The first one, I can go through each one if you want, but the first one goes without saying from the perspective of people accounting.
Right.
I would be honest with you, if you want to get rid of a superintendent, eliminate your people accounting person, you're not going to have any superintendent.
My question, I was just, as I'm looking at that, all of those jobs are very important to the district. But if, and if that's what you're thinking that you need to have, but if, if it, if you're saying, fall, falling into where you have that position, but it could be a halftime, a three-quarter time, or two positions shared, you know, I don't, I don't know that I look at that, that that's that big of a deal, but... Because it's all going to shake out when you're doing the budget any, every year anyways, right?
It's going to come, what is our FTE? Or what are our budget and projected FTE that we're building a budget on? What's the state giving us? You know, where I see this potentially, you know, the board's going to have to make some decisions, which we know going ahead, is if, if these are vital positions to run in the district or operate, are there other positions that are not giving us the results that we need, but yet we're still investing in those positions?
It just scares me to commit to something that we don't know. Like, to say that we need all these people. I know at one point, your vision was to have the director of curriculum be moved and shifted to the administrators of each building. That was the long-term goal. And I know it's, you've always said, like, we're not there yet, we're not there yet. But we'll get there.
So if I assume that, that was where we were going, part of that vision was to have an operational person, someone overseeing the opening, closing buildings, the maintenance and operations.
Yeah.
We can't, we don't have that now, and we're, we're spread out over this.
Wouldn't that position be cheaper than a director of curriculum, though?
I'm going to say, you get what you pay for on all these positions. A lot of posting, interviewing for food service director. There's people who just turn us down because we're not even in the ballpark of what they rank. We're going to have that, should a... And there's a lot of speculation you can do on, on current staffing.
Yeah.
They leave, we look at, can we, do we need to replace that position?
Well, and I guess I, it just, it scares me to, like, have it in a contract, that we have to have all of these positions employed. And we have no, once we agree to this, we have no say then, right? We are not able to cut any of these positions.
Well, it's mutually agreed through the budget, so we're going to have a fair conversation, as soon as if,
Okay.
Based on the operational needs. If we're downsizing, you know, the question's going to be, do you still need the same number of administrators? If our number's decreasing, the question's going to be, do you still need the same number of media specialists? Do you still need the same number of secretaries? If, if the enrollment is decreasing.
And do you need these positions full-time?
I'm going to be honest, the challenge with it, regardless of our size of our district, you still got the grants that got to be submitted to the state.
Right.
You got all the finances that have to be reported, all the people, regardless of the size of your district.
Sure, yeah.
That, that, that was, that's my rationale behind it.
So when it says, so I guess I'm confused, when it says, like, mutually agreed upon, this is kind of saying, we need to have these positions, but you're saying, if we, if we agree upon it, we don't technically have to keep all these positions?
If we're both in agreement with the position, yes.
But we, but by you saying you want these, obviously, it might not be an agreement.
I feel strongly today.
Yeah, right.
Strongly today, and I'm going to cut this out, I apologize. I feel strongly today that the successes that this district has had has been because we've invested in certain structures to change our model.
Yeah.
The, you know, the first, the people, the, the community liaison, that first impression parents get, gives them a very positive impression before they even step foot in our district. That taking them from there and, and giving them to the schools to kind of make it now personalized, wouldn't be there.
Right.
It's a, it's a liaison that, you know, in that particular position, deals with helping kids, families fill out online applications, rather than just saying, here's the link, sitting down at the computer in the office and filling out the lunch application. Giving them resources to community events. I think that's, that has changed the culture of this building. We were expecting it to happen as an organization, and it was happening in pocket, but it wasn't a systemic approach.
And I agree, they're all important positions. I, I just think it ties us in a certain way, but...
And I kind of, like, what Sarah said about tying us, I have, I mean, you, you've had four evaluations, Brian. It's been effective, effective, highly effective, highly effective, which added a year under your contract each time. So we're essentially, if we agree to these three considerations, being bound for a contract without end, that is potentially without end. I mean, for, for decades into the future, we can be bound by this, these three considerations.
If I'm not doing the job you hired me to do, you as a seventh board member have every right to not give me an effective evaluation. The only thing I've ever asked for is that if I'm doing something that either is different from what the board is asking, or different, or in, not in alignment with what the board's asking, then let me know, give me a chance to correct it.
And that's fine, Brian, but you being an effective or highly effective administrator doesn't mean that thirty years from now, we're going to need a director of curriculum.
I think the language written in, what he's written, says that there's flexibility, that we have that ability in the, in the budget process.
It's mutually agreed upon, though, meaning that we both, the board and superintendent agree, right?
Can I put the elephant in the room? During teacher negotiation, what was the position that they, that they spoke at the podium that was the least effective in this district? The director of curriculum. I'll be willing to pull up right now, if you want to go to IDEX and show, since we've had a director of curriculum, and we have focused instruction, we have raised our score. Is he the one that is actually in the classroom doing it? No.
No. But he's getting the materials, pulling the groups together, and for staff members to stay, and this is where I find, and I bit my lip, offensive, cut the position, 'cause that gives us our step. I have a problem with that.
I say curriculum director, because it would be mentioned, I could've said any one of those nine positions.
You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right.
So I'm not saying without the curriculum director, but I'm saying that I don't, I don't, I just don't fundamentally like the idea of being bound for decades into any contractual terms that we don't have.
Guess my question would be, if it is flexible, then why put it in here? If it's gonna be mutually agreed upon every, every budget anyway, what is the, what is the importance of this to you, if every year it's up for negotiation anyway?
Because in the current budget process, at any one time, and it happened two years ago with the community liaison position, it was cut, and then the 11th hour was wanting to be put back and all the documents had to be, it's having a conversation with the board saying, what do we value this organization to support what we want to have happen here? You've got a million dollars, we have a billion dollars being sold in May for technology. To not have someone who oversees the implementation of that, other than myself, I believe is not responsible.
Right. So essentially, you're saying, this is the support that you need to be able to do the work that you do.
That, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
That this is the team that you need to be able to do the work that you do.
So then if we have to cut, I don't mean to cut you off, go ahead. If we had to cut, like, where else do you cut from? If, if this is what you need to get the job done, I can support that. I mean, you'd know the job, you do it day-to-day. But where does that leave us, I mean, what does that leave us with? You can't cut teachers, you need them in the class. You can't really cut supplies, that's nothing. We're committed now to all these, where else do you cut? If we have to cut?
We can, I'm gonna say this, and I know it's gonna be twisted out for the listening audience in here, so I'm not implying that I'm gonna bring you a budget, but you can cut teachers. We have class sizes that are low.
Oh, I don't like that.
You can cut secretarial staff.
Yeah.
You can cut media parochies. We are offering services, you can cut schedule Bs.
Yep.
Academic or scholastics.
But that takes away from the kids' time, right? That would be cutting, I mean, schedule Bs.
Transportation, you could cut sporting programs, you could cut, I mean, I don't want to cut those things.
Right, right.
That's not what I would be looking to cut, but there are areas that are non-essentials.
Yeah.
But it, but it, it limits, but it, but you're talking about in here, that you, these, these are, these are vital positions, but they could be vital positions that aren't full-time. That could be a half-time, made half-time based on what's happening in.
That's why I had difficulty with the FTE status wording.
Right. But we know part-time positions barely, they don't get filled a lot.
It says, adjust the title and duties of said positions and the FTE status of each said position. That's what it says.
Yeah, and that, that's talking about whether they're, go to halftime or full-time.
So it could be, I guess I, I, that's why I was asking that, is that each of those positions is full-time?
Currently, they're all full-time, except the community liaison and public relations secretary. That position.
What does this, the FTE status of each said position?
That's Brian's way of saying.
Full-time.
Full-time, half-time. He calls it FTE.
FTE is what we're for.
I understand that, but when it says each said position, it makes it appear to me that each said position that's in here, that each position is full-time.
Oh, okay, all right, I get it.
Right.
They are what they are right now, but I read that, that's why I said, if you, so you need all of these, so you need a food service and transportation, you need somebody to lead those. That could be one person who is a food service director and a transportation director.
I understand what you're saying, but when I read it, I'm reading it as each said position is full-time status.
So could you reword it as what you're saying? Is that what you're maybe asking for?
I don't know, maybe I'm just overreading it.
And, but rerate it to say what?
That the combination of each said position is full-time status, or, I, maybe I'm reading it inaccurately, but to me, it states that each said position is a full-time position.
I, I'm sorry, we're still on this, it's fine, I just wanted to comment that I'm concerned about, I mean, the budget is one of the primary responsibilities of the Board of Education. And I'm concerned about limiting the ability of future boards to do their job by being bound to something like this. I mean, I think that every, every elected board should be able to react to conditions as exist at the time in which that person serves. I don't know if we should concern ourselves with limiting the ability of future boards to do their job.
And I would, I would look at it as saying, these are, regardless of what district you're in, what board's sitting here, these positions oversee vital area of this district. From feeding our kids, to transporting our kids, to special needs populations, to the budget, payroll benefits, purchasing, the curriculum, the people, every single one of these positions is a vital position that in some fashion, in every district you have.
If those positions are vital, then I trust the members here after me to make that decision.
Every one of our contracts hold our hands in some way. Every single one of our contracts do. Even the state of Michigan holds our, how we're gonna teach our students and what kind of credits they're going to take.
But this discussion is whether to further bind us, and I'm just saying, I don't know if it's a great idea.
For me, it seems like everyone's hung up on this mutually agreed upon language. And in all of my dealings with Brian, I don't think he's ever brought anything to us that wasn't in the best interest of the district. So in this language, I trust in Brian that if we didn't need an accounts payable coordinator and the budget process came along, that would be his recommendation and we would mutually agree.
And I think, I recall two years ago, that's sort of what happened with that liaison person, was that he really didn't, that wasn't his first, like intuition to say, hey, scrub this person. But if that's what the board was agreeing on, and that's where we were headed, that's where we were headed.
Like if you looked at the minutes of that one, I think my comment was, if you're asking me to choose programs for kids over a service that I would have, I choose programs for kids.
I call the same.
Cut the position.
But now, would you change that?
Pardon?
Would you change that decision now?
I would be reevaluating every position in the district. Because if that, and I'll just go back to this, if that position is eliminated, that duty has to fall somewhere.
Exactly, yeah, it has to. I guess that's why, to me, it's, if it does seem still so flexible, I guess the importance of it being in the contract seems irrelevant, because it's still gonna be up for debate every budget. I guess I'm just wondering the relevance of it.
Maybe just, Brian just wants commitment from his boss to say, these positions are valuable. Are valuable.
Yep.
I think that's probably what he, the statement he's looking for from us.
I know, I think, I would like to think we all sit here and know that these are valuable positions, at least I do.
I would never say they weren't.
I'm good with them.
Could we talk about any of the other items?
Well, no, let's, let's.
You want to stick with this one?
No, I just wanna say, I mean, do, do we have a majority that don't have a problem with it? 'Cause otherwise, we can, we can sit here talking about it, and if we don't have a majority, then that's not something.
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have a problem, no.
I do have an issue with it. Of course, no, just the, being contractually bound to something like I say, I'd be concerned. I do give you credit, Brian, for your creative.
I didn't hear what you said, Dee.
I said I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't like being bound to it, especially if it's flexible, I just don't see the relevance.
I agree that it's, these are vital positions, but.
Yeah, I do too, but I think it does tie our hands to something that we may or may not be able to sustain at some point.
What would make it more palatable?
I don't know. I wouldn't, I would need to mull it over.
Can I ask this question? Whatever board's sitting up here, that board says, Brian, we believe that you have the qualifications to be transportation director. As a board, you ultimately approve the budget.
Yes.
You ultimately said. And if you approve to, or you accept to eliminate that, are you, are you not setting me up for failure? By eliminating one of these positions that there's not a person in the organization that can do?
Yes.
So my position on it is, as I said, and somewhat, it's what Trey says, a commitment is, each one of these positions, if you're in the district in Marquette or you're in district in Detroit, these are vital positions to an organization. You don't have to have, I'm not cutting, you don't have to have deans of students in every building. Nothing sets it.
Mm-hmm.
I would say, I'd argue it's a vital position.
Yeah.
You don't have to have counselors. You don't have to have two secretaries in every building. You could reduce those secretary hours to the exact hours of the school day. You could stagger the secretary. And again, I'm not pinning one against the other, because that's not what I look at when I do the budget, but I believe these are vital positions, that I'm just asking the commitment that we're gonna support these vital positions.
I think.
That's, that's fine.
Okay, I think we're good. I think number one is a yes. Right? Okay. Number two. So I'll just sort of, so basically, this, this is a severance package. You're not looking, you don't want any kind of raise, anything, it's just you want something at the end, and you would have to retire. You couldn't just go leave and go work somewhere else. If you go and work somewhere else.
It's void.
It doesn't, it's void. If you start all of a sudden for some miraculous, amazing thing, doing a terrible job, and you're evaluated out, nothing.
It's void.
How many total years are you expecting to be with the district?
My wife will agree to have me home. I'm just kidding.
Can we call her?
I realistically, in my life plan, have seven more years with the district. My daughter's in 10th grade, two more years.
Good for you.
Four years of college.
As everybody says.
That's all I can say.
And you've been here how many?
This will be my fourth year, so you could look at anywhere from 10 to 11 years.
So in essence.
So in essence, what it would be is, well, let's assume I've worked here for 10 years. When I retire, I pay my insurance, I turn the district a receipt, you don't pay FICA retirement on it, it's the insurance cost that year for the next 10 years. And that's the amount that you would have.
Does that change? And is that, is that a fixed amount that will never go up?
No.
It, insurance adjusts.
Okay, so as of today, that's what it would be.
As of today, that's what.
But we don't know what that would look like 10 years from now.
I can't speak.
And then 10 years beyond that.
You know, and I'll put it on the record, because it's a public document, I took a $40,000 pay cut to come to Richmond County Schools, so for life, 10 years, that's $400,000 of lost revenue for my personal family to come here. It's more about the environment and the well-being why I chose to come here. So for me, and I'll be honest, you have probably an open book, I know what my retirement's gonna be. I'm never gonna make that money again in this district as a superintendent, but I made it more. So I know what my fixed retirement's gonna be.
I'm good with it.
It blows my mind, and just wait, it blows my mind, because you're, you're at, you're, you're rolling the dice with this, in my opinion, as opposed to, you can get a raise right now, you possibly could get a raise next year, you've not asked for one every single year, even though we've talked about it. So you're rolling the dice with this, because you, you have to retire. And if we look at what we're paying out right now with, was it $45,000 to?
It's $45,000 from the administrator that left, potentially it's another $45,000 coming up. That's 90, and we have two more administrators, so there's, you know, another $180,000 in severance package that the four administrators that I know of would have gotten.
And even, even if you take, if it's 11 years, and it, let's say that goes up to $4,000, you're still looking at less than what we're already paying, I don't, I don't have any problem with it.
Correct. If you took that and just used the word four, $4,000, and you multiply it by 10 years, there's $40,000. That's still less than what the current contract pays out for administrators.
Right.
That we're obligated to pay.
Good, Dee? Tracy?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
My only, I have one question. So should this go through, or some mutually agreed upon, whatever goes through, and you forego a raise, how many years are you foregoing a raise for? If this goes through as is, you're saying, I don't want the raise, is that good for this year, or are you saying, okay, for, if all this goes through, I'm not gonna ask for a raise for the next four years, or?
I don't know what my position's gonna be, next year or here.
Yeah, I don't know that you can say that.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, like, we're committing to something for 10, 11 years post. It, that doesn't anything stop Brian from coming back next year and saying, well, okay, now this year I want the 3%.
But it still has to be, it still has to be agreed upon.
And it doesn't come for us to say, no.
I know, I just, in my head, I didn't know if he had a number to say. I'm asking for these, knowing that they are long-term commitments of a cost, I'm committing to not ask for a raise for, I just didn't, he may, he's, he's got a vision, sometimes he thinks of these things ahead of time, I thought maybe he would know.
This one, you're giving me too much credit, I haven't. More of a, I'll be honest with you, it was looking, this particular one was, you know, when I can in my life plan retire.
Yeah.
I got many years ahead of me before I hit social security.
Right.
Yeah, if you're going in seven years, yes, that's a long time.
Because I guess in my head, when we're talking about like a 3%, it was roughly $5,000. This projected yearly cost is only, you know, right now, 36, we even call it 4. So in my head, that's a wash, right? So what we would've been paying him in that 3% raise, we're just kinda giving him at the end to pay for retirement. And in my mind, I'm good with that.
Correct. Remember, that 3% raise that you are offering.
Well, it's only 10.
Is in the budget every year going forward.
Say that again, I was, I'm sorry.
So in this year's budget.
Yes.
You have, you have my base salary, and if you were to, if we were to agree on that 3%, you're gonna increase this budget by 3%.
Every, yeah.
That increase is gonna carry over, 'cause you're continuing that base salary increase for the future years.
So.
Yeah, yeah, no, that your salary would go up.
That becomes a new pay.
Yeah, absolutely, yes, absolutely. So that's why I'm okay with this, I just didn't know if like next year was gonna be like, and now I want this also.
And it's always, is the board can say no?
Right.
From that perspective, it's not, it's not a, the only thing that is an automatic is the year based on the evaluation.
Right.
That is the only thing that's an automatic, in addition to what's currently written.
Brian?
I mean, I understand everyone else is, is in favor of it. It is, we kinda started talking about a 3% raise, and now we're committing ourselves to over $40,000 in insurance benefits based on this year's yearly cost. I guess if the group is on, on board with it, I won't oppose it, but it's very pointing out, I think.
Right.
Okay. Number three.
Say that again, Kyle, I'm sorry.
I'd say it would be more than 30 grand in salary over the next 10 years, 'cause it would be built in.
Correct.
Okay, number three.
I didn't quite understand this one, can you help me understand it, Brian, a little bit better? Like, you're thinking you, you want good relationships, which I totally get.
The existing contract, the paragraph before reads, "The board individually and collectively shall refer promptly and criticize all criticism, complaints, suggestions called to the attention of the superintendent for study and recommendation if an individual board member deems referral to be warranted based on the nature of the complaint criticism." So what I'm asking is, I wanna keep that language, if there's, there's something brought to your attention that should be addressed, that it's brought to my attention, so I can address it. In addition, if there, based on our relationship, if there seems to be on either end that it's going south, in a negative way, that either party, either the action of the board or the superintendent, can say, let's get someone in there to try to repair that relationship. It's much like what we have done, whether it's a board. It's much like what we have done, whether it's a board relationship or board superintendent. You know, again, I'm, I'm looking at this, and it's a long-term structure, that this board could look very different in two years, it could look very different in four years. And, and my, my intent is, I, I wanna make sure we build the relationship and work together. Almost like when a marriage starts having a rocky situation, we go see a counselor.
Preactively paying for counseling. You're gonna have to put that in the vows. People go to counseling.
That's what I'm looking at.
That's funny. Oh, okay. How much does that cost, when we have an advisor, like, what is that?
It could be someone from the ISD, which could be free, it could be the M A S B. Um, it's typically, I would say, a good ballpark is a thousand to fifteen hundred for an event.
I would say fifteen hundred.
Okay.
And when we've done them before.
Does it, I mean, what about like our workshops, I mean, we, we usually, I mean, is that anything, this stuff can be tackled under?
Well, we got that one, it was, could be for, but...
Right, right.
Could be.
'Cause I'm just wondering, some of this could be resolved without hiring somebody, though, right?
That would be my hope, is that we could, then I could say, you know something? Whoever the board president is, um, I believe we've got some tension here that we need to address, can we have a workshop to address it?
We should try first, okay.
Oh, you're saying when we do a workshop.
Yeah, I thought, don't we kind of like work on things? I just didn't know if there'd be the option of trying to resolve it internally first, so that we're not just outputting that money. But then if it's not, you know, just to make sure that that's allowed.
I think so, 'cause I think that's where, whenever it is deemed desirable by either a majority, an outside advisor, so I would think that's where that would come into play.
The first and the periodic opportunity to discuss is what, let's figure out this together.
Right.
That's what we bring in, it's, it's, we don't air our dirty laundry till we try to fix our dirty laundry.
Right. Okay, I'm good with that one, I don't mind that one.
I'm good with it.
The, I'm sorry, the sentence before that, where it says, "The board agrees that it shall work with the superintendent's very cooperation teamwork, that shall provide, shall, shall provide the superintendent with periodic opportunities to discuss board superintendent relationships whenever it is deemed desirable by either a majority of the board or by the superintendent." What would be an example of that?
I would look at it as a, I'm sorry, I would look at it saying, okay, I, we are working, going through, and I'm sensing there's tension among us as a group. I request an opportunity to sit down and let's talk that through. If we do that, and it's still not working, then we go to the next level and try to get an outside person to come and help. That's the way I look at that language.
And that, that was two sentences, Dave.
That was my intent.
So it's deemed desirable by either the majority of the, of the board or by you?
Correct, that would be...
An outside advisor would be.
By either a majority, yeah.
Or by the superintendent.
Or by the superintendent.
And the only reason why it's written that way, from my angle, is that no one person on the board can kind of direct that we need to happen, but if the majority of the board feels we got an issue, then we're, let's figure out resolving it.
I'm fine with that one.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Chris?
Yeah?
Kyle?
Thumbs up.
Go ahead.
You said okay, didn't you, right? Okay. Okay. Well, that being said, the resolution that we have, the attached documentation will be...
But, so now I have a question. If, if I don't agree with one of those, would I, I mean, I could techni, I would technically have to vote no for all of it?
If you, this is, these three things, we have a majority that, are one package.
Right, but then, so then I, and I may just be the minority, but if I don't just, I mean, like, 'cause I'm fine with some of them, but that, I'm just, that first one is, I'm struggling with, I'll be honest. So then I would just vote no for the whole thing?
If that's what you wanna do.
Okay. I just wanna, we're not sectioning it into pieces, I just don't wanna give the wrong assessment.
No, 'cause we have a majority of the board that says these things are good, so this is what, this is what Brian's counterproposal, we would be going with this. If you feel you're not comfortable with something, you can...
With a piece, I just didn't want it to be portrayed as I don't agree with all of it, 'cause that's not the case.
Well, what you can do is when...
I just have a section.
When the person makes the motion, if you're gonna choose to vote no, you would always have the ability to say, I have a, well, I don't necessarily disagree with all of it, I have a little problem with it, for that reason, I'm voting no, whatever you wanna do.
Yes.
So, the attached documentation will be this document, and I will give that to Brian or Terry or whoever, so that, that's what's attached to it. Okay? So that being said...
I motion to approve the amendment to the superintendent's contract as presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, is there any discussion?
Now, I think, or no?
Now that'd be the...
Okay, yes. So I, as in discussion, I, I do only have a problem with this consideration, number one. I think it, it ties us into a corner. I have, did not disagree that these are all very important positions. If it's flexible, I guess I just am questioning the relevance of having it in, as, in, in a contract, because it's a lot harder to get something out of a contract once it's in a contract, and I feel like it ties us and, and puts us in a place. So, um, the rest of it I'm good with, but that one I, I do struggle with.
And I don't wanna be redundant, I guess, I more or less agree with Sarah, though, just the first one, being tied in for that length of time, when I think we all can, any reasonable person on a school board can agree that these are vital positions, and I think it kind of goes without saying.
Anybody else? Okay, it's been moved and supported, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
No, nay.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Brian, and we are adjourned at eleven-eleven.